It is now 7:00 PM. We call this meeting to order. And may we please rise for the Fudge of Legions?
Aye.
And the regular meeting starts.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the very positive, gorgeous hands of my nation on your ground, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go to the Governor of the Board Call. Bryce?
Here.
Bledsoe?
Here.
Ashman?
Here.
George?
Here.
Hayden?
President?
Robinson?
Here.
Skorodkoff?
Here.
And would you like a recommendation for the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
Motion by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Bledsoe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up for number five, we have the approval of our council minutes. We will be approving three sets of minutes. And first we'll begin with the April 22nd, please.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting dated April 22nd, 2019, as presented. Support.
Motion by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Hayden. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second will be the April 29th minutes of the special workshop meeting.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the special meeting workshop dated April 29th, 2019, as presented. Support.
Motion by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Bledsoe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries as well. Seven zero. And last, we have the minutes of the special workshop meeting, which would be May 13th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the special workshop meeting of May 13th, 2019, as presented. Submit. Support.
And motions made by Councilman Bledsoe, supported by Councilman Skorodkoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries as well. Thank you very much. Next up, we'll have our acceptance items, which include the building department report, our ordinance violation report, and the board minutes of the planning commission, DDA joint meeting, and the township does not have anything included this one. Bledsoe? And we'll do a lot of part of dispersments, which is item number seven.
I'd like to back up to the ordinance tracking report that a key be added to the bottom for the color coding, because some are color-coded and some are not, which is our hope.
I make a motion for dispersments.
Some fine print here, huh?
Make a motion to approve our dispersments in the, for the report in the May 15, 2019, and pay those bills in the amount of $23,964.50.
Ask for them. And can we have some discussion, please, if there is any?
So the unpaid's on this report here are expected to be paid when?
The pay date is column two, so they could be paid anywhere from today, 5/20, and they're all the way up to 6/20 on that unpaid items. So I pay three times a month on the 10th, 20th, 21st.
And they're not paid because we haven't gotten the invoice for them yet?
No, we've received the invoice. They've been input into the accounts payable system, but the checks will not be generated until the 20th or the 30th or...
On number 30, when is it expected? I mean, we have the invoice for them. Looks like they were billed, they were billed early April. When do we expect that they're going to be delivered?
They are scheduled to be delivered actually this Friday.
So they're billed ahead of time, before their delivery?
Right, but you'll notice that they're not actually going to be, we're not cutting the check, and they will not be receiving payment until after we receive delivery.
Okay, well, all right, so it shows the 20th the checks be paid, but they're going to be delivered Friday?
Yes.
26th or something?
Okay.
I have a question on item number 26, six words and conservancy.
Yes.
Is that new?
That is the, the Fragmities, the CMA.
Gotcha.
Membership.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we have a motion on the table from Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Bryce. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skorodkoff?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
I do have just a couple of quick questions, does it come up? On number 39, is it truly $1.48?
Truly, it was $1.48.
I read the description.
It's worth the paper.
And I thought that just doesn't seem okay.
And I did bill the township for $75, so...
I just like, just want to be sure. And then, on number 49, did they charge to convert the planning tower document for PDF?
Yes, according to the invoice.
We couldn't have done that in-house?
Uh, that I don't know. It's possible. I don't know how it would have come through.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure what all entailed, because they had, like, set images in there, and some of their formatting is a little bit different, but we have professional, professional, we should have been able to do that.
Okay. Do you know what the breakdown of that was?
I do not have the invoice that they made.
Sorry, just curious why.
Next up is the approval of our treasure report.
I make a motion to approve the treasure report from the month of April 30th, 2019, as presented. Support.
Do we have any discussion in there? We have seven of those. All right, hearing none, we have a motion on the table from Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Bledsoe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you very much. Item number nine will be our public comments, and at this time, we'll take agenda items only. If it is anything that would not be on our agenda currently, you can do that at a later time, and we're welcome you to do that then. So if you would like to go ahead and step to the podium, state your name, if you would like to share your address as well. Anybody's welcome? All right. Again, we will have agenda items as well later. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Jamie. I live in the city of New Jersey, and I hear that there are business issues with the drainage right now, and I think they'd like to use our property to get a height to there or so. Because I got a, I got a safety issue too right now, and in order to prevent that, I would like to get information from the village to get the engineer's number and see if they can work together with the engineer that I hired to get the safety fix on there too. And I heard there's also somebody interested in calling the village, wanting to buy the property that we got behind the house, right next to the creek too, to maybe take a little park over there, and maybe use that for a purchase to someone there too. We, we've been working with it out with the county, with open county right now, please, yeah, this is an increase, but that would expect her from the organization of money, keep on a good purchase with us, and he said we have to have an engineer design it to supersuicide. I'd like to know if, if we can get the two engineers to work together, or if we can maybe have the engineer that's going to work on the drainage over there, design my safety too, and that way we can all work together to get that done.
That is a great suggestion, and we'll definitely touch.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll, I'll contact you from the office this week.
Okay, okay.
Any other public comments on agenda items? Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda, and this will include the BGYA 501(c)(3) recognition resolution for their 50-50 raffle, the mental health awareness recognition resolution, a note that the office will be closed, the village offices will be closed on May 31st, 2019, and a special events permit request for the DDA eats in the streets. Please note that the permit is out for the signature from the fire department and the sheriff department, and that will be returning.
So why does the office need to close down?
Um, well, the bill allowed both staff members to be on vacation, and he was going to be in the office, and unfortunately, he will not be in the office. Matt is also on vacation, so it just happens to be the perfect snowball where everybody is not available at the same time. That is also the holiday week, so he falls in right at that time.
So Bob's not working that week either? October?
He won't be in the office, to run the office.
Why would he go to sit in the office? Is also closing up the office?
I guess that was the decision made by Bill, and it was supported at the time by planning, or I mean, on personnel when he mentioned it. I don't feel that others of us feel that we can do what should be done in the office, so as opposed to not doing the job well, we thought it would be fair to close the office. I, oh, hold on, I was just going to say, hold on real quick. Liz also mentioned in Bill that the number of people on Fridays is quieter, and it is the holiday week, so that was, you know, again, but go ahead.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, to discuss potential citizens that might be assistance during that time, bringing them in. The consensus was that that's usually a very slow date to begin with, the holiday they expected to be slower. That was part of consideration, just making it not disclosed as opposed to track them over when we didn't have an experienced person available, so.
Did you solicit, I mean, what did personnel do to, to try and find a replacement? I guess I'm just surprised that we would close the office.
Well, they, apparently the staff members who were not, either had pre-approved, the tuition also had, and getting other expenses that they'd already paid for that they can't cancel out. And Bill was going to get what he said, so we really didn't have any options in that that were good options.
What options did you explore?
We talked about potentially Matt, but he was not going to be there. There would be a possibility of somebody, council trying to help fill in or something like that, but that's, doesn't necessarily fit with our schedules and stuff either. If it's, and we just felt that if it was just a one body, just to answer, say, okay, I'll take a message for you, then that really doesn't serve the public that well, and it's just as easy to replicate a message, I think, even by our staff or provision of those questions and topics when we were talking.
I didn't receive any, no solicitation. I mean, when you said about reaching out to council for...
Well, like, so the conversation as a one body is not the incorrect procedure body. The people that know what they're doing are not in the office, and therefore, one of us sitting in for the day is not going to help, because our conversation is going to be, I'm sorry, we can't help you with that, let's take a message and call you back. So why do we pay somebody to do that, when we can have, you know, the people who do it appropriately do it at the correct time? So that was what the consensus came to be. And do we have a motion on the consent agenda? May I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Support.
Are there any further, so that's the consent, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Item two, motion carries. Item number 11 is our trustee committee updates, and we start down here, I'm coming.
We have further the agenda about the Historic Society wanting to bring a blacksmith shop, so everybody receiving their packets, the information on that, and the plans, and we'll go over that, like I said, later in the agenda. So, nothing, nothing else.
I have a question. Now that Bill is officially gone, and that, I'm just wondering if IT has updated his computer with the password change, about that?
No, I went in Friday to get his password to change it, and he said that they were going to leave it open for a week, which I wasn't aware of, since his last day was Friday. Typically, the procedure is to change the password to secure our files, secure information, so, no, that has not been done. Council wants me to do that, I can go and change the passwords.
Did you guys discuss it, I'm sorry, I was going to say, did you guys discuss it any more during his processing?
The fact of his inbox was clear, there was nothing in it. Liz doesn't have permission to access the files if there are questions or concerns during that time, so I'm under the impression that's why it is open, because that's where she can access it.
Clear meaning, there's nothing in it.
In his inbox, for his email. But what is on the computer then, what obviously says, records that we're available, so that's what the conversation was at that time.
Historically, we go and we change the password to protect the integrity of the information from a village manager's perspective, I would make the recommendation that we follow the same procedure.
That sounds reasonable.
Yes. Is there, do we know, is there any possible way for him to access that computer?
He does have access remotely.
And that probably would be...
Agreed.
In that process, though, because there are emails, is there any way that we can defer the emails to automatically forward them to Liz right now?
Well, as long as Liz has access to it, she'll be able to check the emails as well.
She would have a new password to be able to access and check for any emails and stuff. Yeah, maybe just...
With the temporary.
Keep anybody who can find access with the old password.
And Tom?
I have another item. I regretfully, and I apologize, I didn't give the council an affirmative notice, but my boss is retiring in two weeks, and today I've received some vocal calls that mean that my position is going to be more demanding now that he's going to be gone, and with personnel, there's a lot going on right now with the personnel committee, and I'm requesting to have a change in my position, to remove, be removed from personnel, and maybe place it to another position, if we have something else that I could swap with or something, because I have a lot going on right now. And, and I think it's right now is a critical time for personnel to be involved heavily, you know, with the decisions that we got to make for our new village manager. Just a thought that I did have, is like, I know that I was on streets before, and Dan is on streets, I don't know, you know, everybody would be open, maybe just swap him with that, and I could go back and do a streets, which I'm familiar with, but... I would, I would support that if, if that's what council wanted.
Well, we'll have to see, because the streets were doing all the new projects on that as well, so I'm kind of concerned with what, so let's just kind of...
I was going to, I was going to talk about that.
Well, definitely put that on, and kind of have a side conversation, and see what comes up with, but...
Why wouldn't we be able to do that now?
Because it's an appointment, that we have to kind of figure out if somebody wants to trade up, or, you know, to have a conversation with, so I can talk with them and see what, you know...
Does anybody else want to, should we go on the personnel committee?
I think Robert Gruehl says that we have to have it as a agenda, to be able to take action on it, in that case.
Well, because we, I was only going to make also another suggestion, since it would be a whole nother month, I mean, we have, we got to make some choices and everything else with the picking, you know, candidates and everything else. You guys want to wait a whole nother month before we even go that far? Does that make sense? Or would you be able to do a special meeting or something like that?
We don't have to, because it's an appointment, so we don't have to. So it's not going to be, it's going to be just, like I said, sitting down and talking with those that are involved and figuring it out, and making sure that works correctly. So that's not something that we can do at this point.
So the further the discussion, not necessarily meeting, but somebody that's been through the process of hiring a manager, Colleen's been on the personnel committee, she's well aware of past and historical things that have been done on the personnel committee, I think there is things to be lost when you totally negate people that have been on the personnel committee, so it doesn't have to be me, but my recommendation to council would be strongly consider that if someone that's been on the council, and had been through the rigorous, okay, reviews of resumes, rigorous reviews of ranking the potential candidates, and then selecting candidates for interviewing, et cetera, so to select somebody new to that process that has not been through that or had that experience, I think would be ill-advised and poor management decision.
We also have to take into account, first of all, since people may have, of course, if they're regular lives and jobs, that might also play into that too, because there's a lot of people that may have positions, I've had positions in the past, have had interview positions for hiring within past companies that I was with, so there may be other people on the, you know, on the council who also have past experience that would also bring on a good experience level to it, but it's not directly related. So, Tommy, my understanding is that you would like to have a chance to pack it over, but you try to assess maybe who would be a good person on there, and then, at that point, then we would just confirm that at the next council meeting.
We, like I said, we don't, I mean, we can do it, the report doesn't have to be at the council, we won't have to, I mean, there's lots of different times that we'd be able to speak.
You could appoint somebody, they could start participating in the process, and then we could just confirm it at the next council meeting, so we don't have to have a gap in the committee.
Oh, right, they're welcome. We'll get it off there.
I believe that council also needs to approve that appointment.
Yeah.
Council didn't approve the last appointment.
Who I was going to say, don't approve it, you accepted it.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
Right, we accepted it. So, we are down to Dan.
So I, I'm on roads, maybe, there were a couple people, and even residents, concerned with residents parking on the sidewalk, tires on the sidewalk, blocking the sidewalk with their cars where we don't have curbs, so it's my position tonight to ask council, is that something that we need to, or you want me to work on an ordinance that prevents residents from parking on sidewalks where there are no curbs?
Yes.
I guess.
Is there any existing ordinance that already covers that, either at the local level or possibly state level, or that's around that size?
I'm just going to say, that's a given, you can park on a sidewalk.
Yeah, I just think it's already, somewhere it's already...
They can enforce that already.
Well, but it's not being enforced, I mean, I walk the sidewalks a lot, and I'm sure, Mr. Sutton, I see him crossing paths with me a lot, I mean, you also witnessed a lot of parking on sidewalks. I'm concerned, and so, so have other people in the community, as far as, you know, with all these cars parked on sidewalks, or right adjacent to them, with kids going across the streets and, you know, and everything else, we don't need a casualty out there, you know. I know we're working hard to slow the speeders down and everything else, but I don't even want them to have that one time, and, you know, that blocks the view of somebody crossing the street.
I think we're all in agreement. I have just questioning whether...
Well, I brought this up, and, you know, that's kind of like, we're moving forward with it, but anything, so I'm just really concerned.
So with council's permission, I'd like to review the ordinance book, and if there isn't anything in the ordinance with council's permission, is that what you want me to pursue if it's not in our ordinance book now? It is now?
Under stopping standing parking between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM any day of the week on any street, highway, roadway, or municipal parking lot, or other lot, which is zoned commercial or parking purposes, under the provisions of the village ordinance, on a sidewalk, in front of a public or private driveway, within an intersection...
But it says, that's between 2:00 and 6:00 AM, huh?
Yeah.
So that's not, I guess that needs to be expanded, or is...
Just amended.
So I think a good thing to do would be to talk to Glover and see, because that already is, I don't think we need an ordinance of something that is already laws that are in effect, we don't need an ordinance to ordinance, so let's just double check and see where that is first.
Okay, do we want to consider amending the ordinance such that they can't park at any time during the day, especially during school, school hours, et cetera? So right now, it's, you can, with the ordinance way it read, you cannot park on the sidewalk between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM?
Correct.
Really, does that really make sense, Larry?
It's slow movement time.
I think it's, yeah.
Talking about sidewalks.
You know, there's a lot of people, I myself do that at my house, I will pull my car up front if I'm going to be home for a half hour before coming up to council.
You park on the sidewalk?
I don't park on the sidewalk. At least I try not to park on the sidewalk. I may be really close to it, but I'm not on the sidewalk.
Are you sure about that? We got photos, we got photos, Larry. No, so, no, all kidding aside, all kidding aside, I think it's a serious issue, and it is a potential safety hazard for children, et cetera, so I believe that the ordinance needs to be looked at in terms of the timing of when, and maybe it should be split up. I get it, 2:00 AM, 6:00 AM, Bob doesn't want anybody in the streets when he's plowing snow, especially during winter hours, but we're talking about parking on the sidewalk during daylight hours, during school, school crossings, et cetera, it just poses a big danger to children, and, and the people that do walk the sidewalks.
Start on our sidewalk.
Well, first of all, if people are not parking on the, they shouldn't be parking on the
sidewalks, period. If they are parking on the shoulder of the road between the... during, if they are parking on the shoulder of the road between the edge of the road and the sidewalk, are you trying to stop that too, or only...
Yes. I've had people approach me several times because...
I think, believe me, I have a lot of concerns, because you know our house is a big Halloween house, and we have a lot of concerns, because in Halloween, when cars are parked, they want their kids wanting to run across the street back and forth, that's a serious safety concern. On the other hand, if you tell people they can't park in front of their house during daylight hours, that's a major inconvenience for a lot of the residents too. I think that we need to put more thought into how much we make decisions on residents. I agree with the safety aspect, but how many actual incidents have we had in the last 10 or 20 years that we've gone?
So maybe on the SIR team, how many people been brought over while you've been on the SIR team, Larry?
I've got a lot.
I think there's some rules, right?
But he actually came up and bumped me with a bumper once.
There's some rules, right? But I guess my point, I'm not worried about, if the council wishes not to continue to allow people to park on the sidewalk, I'm fine. I'll leave it alone. I'm part of the streets, I listen to what council says, not what one or two people, what's the majority of council want to do? Do we want people parking on the sidewalks, yes or no?
On the sidewalks, no. On the shoulder, I think is acceptable, but not... Larry, excuse me, just a few years ago, I think it was your son that got rear end, he was parked there. So, I mean, it's really close, it's close to home for you, it's across the street from me. I've talked to people that are associated with the post office deliveries and all that, and that does, no matter where it's at, it poses a problem.
Yeah.
So let's just put it to rest, we can do it right now. It's not, I mean, it's on the books to do. If it's a lengthening or shortening of hours or whatever the case is, we can get it handled now and be done with it. We don't have to face, that's my thought.
Well, I think there's a big difference between sidewalks and curbs in people's private property. We're talking two different things at the same time.
Yeah, but anything between the street and sidewalk is not their private property.
Right. It is with an easement access, it is your property, you pick taxes on it with an easement. So there's two different things though to say, public sidewalks and curbs and things like that, so I guess we kind of have to see which way we want to go, those are two different things.
So with council's permission, I would like to look at the current ordinance for the time that it states when you should not be on the road, which I agree with part of that ordinance, but to lump that ordinance in with parking on the sidewalk, I think there needs to be a separate ordinance specific to not parking on the sidewalk. So I would like to review that and maybe come to council for a proposal on what maybe that individual separate ordinance should look like for restricting parking on the sidewalks. That's with council's approval.
I would like to see that included. I'd be more than willing to look over any information and reference material that you can find relating to how this is handled in other communities and other recommendations from, for example, NDA and traffic.
Well, you can also get Lieutenant Glover's report as well.
Yes, I would like, I would like more information and reference information that we do for to make a decision on this. But I'm certainly okay with researching it and trying to get the information to make a bank decision.
I got your position. How about you, trustee, but you, what would you like me to do?
Proceed.
Yeah, or George?
Yeah, we're talking sidewalk only right now.
Sidewalks...
Yeah, but proceed, yeah, it's a pain in the butt.
My thought is versus an ordinance, you just change the time of the current ordinance, we don't need to create a new ordinance.
No, I'm saying sidewalk.
Just to kind of say, hey, at any time, you can't do this.
That ordinance is to protect Bob and his team when he does snowplow, and that's weighted by 2:00 a.m., 6:00 a.m., all right? So I don't, I think that 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. is a good timeframe for parking on the streets when there's snow. So I'd like to look at that ordinance and maybe we revise it to fit one for snowplow, maybe during the winter months, right? And then another for separate sidewalks. Trustee scoring, what you like to do?
Review the ordinance.
Yes, review, okay. The next item I had is the drains, so there was concern over the water building up in the park. And I know that before Bill Sprague left, he contacted row engineering to do some work and as one of our residents talked about, row engineering is looking at a possible solution to put a underground pipe that runs from the park over, through, okay, we have to do some underground pouring, and then underneath the street there at...
Cedar.
Cedar Street, thank you. And then into the creek. All right, so I have not heard from row engineering, but if they're actively pursuing, Liz, if you don't mind, give them my number, please?
I will.
If you'd be a part of Streets, I'd like to be involved with what they're thinking.
And I do expect to hear from them one day this week. So we'll have, before that happens, we'll have the plan of what they're doing, right? So they're cutting down a tree or want to cut down a tree, what's the cost involved and all that stuff, right? We'll have all of that.
Well, not from row about the tree, but how the village is gonna go through this homeowner's property to accomplish the...
It's a joint venture, is my understanding?
We would like it to be, yes.
So right now, it's just still conceptual and row engineering is looking at the options and I just want to be involved so that when it comes time to present options to council that I have that information, so.
And again, we want to thank you for assisting us in that situation.
And then the last one, and I go, maybe it's just simple communication with Timo, but I know on, I've heard on several cases that the digital radar that we have out in the village is working very well, and I've heard other positive things about how it is controlling speed, but on several occasions now the batteries run out. And we talked about it earlier, about getting additional batteries so that one can be on a charger at all times and when one goes out, we can change it. So did we end up getting new batteries? Does anybody remember that?
I don't recall getting any batteries.
I thought we approved getting the batteries.
What we did is there was a, at one point, we're talking about getting additional batteries or getting additional signs, and we went with additional signs, and I thought that part of the discussion was, well, they come with two batteries and you can have one, they can operate with one, you can run and swap, and I'll keep them charged up that way. I sort of think it would be good to maybe also get additional batteries, but I recall part of the discussion was there was that the battery was almost as much as the cost of the sign.
That's kind of what I thought too, but I can't say for certain that by the time we invest in the battery, you might as well get the sign in.
Well, we paid a lot of money for them, I just hate to see them sitting there idle with not doing anything. So if it's just a matter of running with one battery in the unit while the other one's on a charger so that, you know, there aren't two batteries in there, then maybe we just communicate with Bob and maybe see if that's the way we want to do it.
I actually heard from a citizen related to those signs, I would like to share that feedback, since we're on that topic right now, but he was expressing that he, his experience with the signs is he sees people slowing down until they can pass a sign, and then they speed up. Another aspect he asked, and this relates to the roads and the western roads, he also was wondering why it is that we allow the school buses to all use the downtown as a cut through or a height or a shortcut to get to Oakwood, because he says maybe one or two school buses might be coming through to pick up kids, but when you see a line of eight of them in a row going down up Church Street, then he has, he's questioning why is it that they all come through like that in the mornings?
It's a very good question.
And was suggesting we should do some considerations for some way to help discourage people from using South Street over to Church Street as a shortcut to Oakwood by maybe some strategically placed stop signs or something like that. So I just wanted to pass on that, but I'm receiving some criticism.
I know we talked about that before, so that's something...
We did, there's a big write-up that Lieutenant Glover passed along to Bill. As far as, you would think that adding stop signs would be a really good deterrent, and other ways, it's actually works the opposite. So there's, we were all, we all received late last year, article, the write-up that was based on this year.
Too many stop signs.
Yeah. But people just tend, they tend to blow right through them then, you know what I mean, which creates more of a dangerous situation, so.
But maybe we can have something with the school buses.
Yeah.
I know we discussed other traffic warning devices as well as fast gas.
So I can, they also mentioned those crosswalk things where you get the strip, that kind of like draws attention to people that are in a residential or area where there could be pedestrians, and that might be something initially to help them.
Yeah, let's see, Tom Clarkson, you know, more strips along, you know, because we have a lot of intersections that people could go through, that would maybe show a good potential to slow them down.
So with council's permission, with Bill Sprague being off or out, gone, I'd like to pursue the bus route coordinator for the school, and then, and I'll just ask if there's accessible on the bus, and they should know where those buses are going. I would think that trustee George would know the buses are going down our street.
There's a lot, but it's, it's, oh yeah, it's a standard. It's traditional.
Well, they come out of Perry Swanson and they go to Oakwood, that's the way you naturally would go. They're not gonna all clog up turning onto 15 to go back up to Oakwood, they would turn that way to go Oakwood because it's a right turn and they're all getting out of way. I mean, I drop off there every day for school, that's what they need to do. So that's natural.
Would this be the type of meeting, Dan, say that I actually kind of like those buses from Church Street? I know, I might be if I were you.
That missed out on the issue, I didn't...
I'm, you know, I don't...
I didn't, it wasn't part of my intention.
They're obeying the speed limits and, you know, and they know occasionally Sam would take up a kid or two. I was just passing on what a resident...
Just traditionally, why does he have to sue?
Larry, what other updates do you have for us?
Oh, we're on a meeting now? Okay.
Yes, I think, right?
I heard you say...
I guess the only updates, well, we're aware within the Personnel Committee that we're gonna be closed May 31st. We also, and this is gonna be on the agenda later, is the master plan. I will say this, that the planning commission meeting, there was disappointment with some of the way that some explicit language was put into the master plan by the council specifically related to the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, because it seemed that that was, language was added in there and was not necessarily consistent with all of the community input that we had for the master plan. But as you will see, we did approve the master plan to move back, because we did not want to hold up the process and causing some delays in that.
So speaking of the master plan, the master plan that we received today, does that have all the edits in it that all the workshops produced?
Plus one.
The town is the only amendment that's there.
Yes, and that was a, just a minor corrective change, because there's no longer an interview at school, as was mentioned in the plan, so we start that out as being not relevant.
Actually, you could re-scape part too.
You could re-scape part too.
That was left in there, that needs to be amended.
Oh, yeah, it does.
Anything from planning committee at all?
The other item that also will be up later on is there's a zoning request that will come in, and we had a discussion on that, and I had some feedback from several residents as well as the Mr. Bass's plan with all of that property, and I think that's also gonna be covered in our...
So, Larry, will you be getting ahold of McKenna to remove this escape part of the master plan as well?
Well, if we amend that, since that's a, I don't think that is a substantive change to it, we can make that amendment tonight before we can say we want to strike this and approve it as an amendment.
Avenge it.
If there's a substantive change, we'd have to send it back, but as long as it's just a, kind of a correctional change, does not change in any way the intent behind the amendment, it's something that we can make the amendment to correct that.
Before it goes to final?
Well, it doesn't go back to McKenna for final until we approve it, and, you know, that's the hope, is that we can get that done tonight, so we get that along.
I personally, I haven't had time to read all the edits that were edited, so I'm not gonna prove it tonight without reading it over.
All right, what about you, Pat?
Regarding Parks and Rec, I know that this is the big turnout here for the start of their season, so they practice now with baseball and soccer, I mentioned it before, I present there about 10 percent of all, we get some piece of letter, it won't be the role, but that's pretty much it. One additional thing, when we talk master plans, I will get with Brad sometime this week regarding the master plan, or the village piece of the master plan, and I will talk to Pat and things like that. I do know from a budgetary standpoint, I mentioned something, I forgot about it, but on that master plan, they, they get a fee for several little tapping, the planning commission, they'll consult first, we will get, from an expense standpoint, we'll get a piece of that, I think, traditionally, you, over there, and I, I think, you're on a thousand dollars. I'll just throw that out, just because I know, I did not mention, 2019 budget, but there should be a line item for that master plan, for Parks and Rec master plan, village piece, what is self-charge, this is, there is going to be something.
Yeah, is there a committee that's working on it with some township? It looks like it's working together on committees and stuff.
I myself have, I'm a committee supporter, I know that the township's name there is, and I like them, and they use them, so I'm a person.
I might suggest it might be helpful to see if there's some way to also include maybe a number of our line commissioner, commissioner, I know Rick McNamara in particular, who has a lot of experience with parks enforcement and things like that, I think he could provide some valuable...
I know, I'm me too.
He'd be able to do that if he was asked.
I'll do that.
If it's okay with the rest of the town.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree with that.
And that's it.
Well, do Corvelli Parks know that?
Yes, and I do know on the skate park and that, I...
Well, let's kind of give me an update earlier, Larry.
Here's the thing, my understanding with the skate park is private individual bought that, so Barry had it, sold it, made a little profit on it, that's nice, but that hasn't, but it hasn't moved as far as I know.
Right, Bill had told me that the 15th, Bill said that the 15th was the final date, but I mean, it was supposed to be out there by the end of December.
Yeah, I know, that's what I, that's what I heard, and I walk around...
Now, Friday, this told me Friday is the final date?
This Friday is the final date?
Um, yes, they're gonna go in and take it down themselves, because apparently the person who purchased it has not come to pick it up yet, so I was told it would be gone by Friday.
One way or the other, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
I will keep you posted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tony, the Fire Board, Authority Board, did I need this dashboard? I haven't heard to add.
Next up, we have our new business, and the first item will be, oh, I apologize, sorry, I didn't even go, I have one item, because everybody else just had so much great information. I did just want to do a quick plug, tomorrow morning at 10:30, tomorrow morning at the Ortonville Cemetery, the VFW will be placing flags on the veterans' graves, there are 550 veterans buried there, we would love to see you tomorrow morning if you're available, anytime you can come in would be great. And that is from Dennis Hoffman or VFW.
And what was the time that they're gonna be...
10:30 Tuesday, tomorrow morning, Tuesday, May 21st. So they would love to see you if you're available, and don't forget about Memorial Day Parade, but that will be Monday. Tony? All right, now, let's get back to the new business, which is our blacksmith shop. We would love to have you go ahead and step forward and share some great things with us.
My name is Ron Sutton, I live on 57 Church Street, and I'm here representing the Blacksmith Shop Committee and the Ortonville Community and Sports Society. First, I'd like to introduce the rest of the committee, Mary Alice Seelbinder and Arnold, but Arnold's not here, Mary Kasuba, and of course, our illustrious president of the Ortonville Community, Joy. Try to make a point. I put together a package, and I know it was in your agenda of what we're trying to do, something that I would have put in, and we had it, is, we didn't get this till Saturday, a rough draft of how we host... a rough draft of how we host the launch. Oops. Oops. Mark, will you take on and pass that now?
I've done that before.
Old men have a right to come. As I stated, we've been talking like a shop for 15, 10 or 15 years or more, and we finally got serious about it and a committee was appointed and approved by the membership of the society. We put together that plan and I hope I give you enough information to get a grasp on what we're trying to do. And I hope that picture that we're passing down, I want you to know that's not the scale or anything else. It's just a picture showing us not only you people, but us, how it would look down there.
Ron, I have a question on that. I mean, I see it's adjacent to the river and then I'm concerned with, you know, some days we do have some overflowing river. How's that going to affect?
Well, that's the first thing we checked into. We're not, that's not a floodplain area according to the maps. The law says we have to be 25 foot from the high water mark and we are plus, we're 28 and a half foot. So we've got three more foot than is required. And that is on the site plan as you've seen, Mark, and that has been approved by the building department because we had to have a site plan to satisfy that. And that's measured and it's staked out. It's been staked out down there. I don't know whether your people knew what the stakes was for, but it's been staked out for several months down. So if you have any questions, basically what I'm here for is to seek to build a village's approval to do this. Of course, and we understand it's village property. We also understand that the building is going to belong to the village. We understand all of that. So actually, it is going to be village property. It's not going to be our property. It's going to be village property.
How long will it, the structure take probably?
You know, Mark, that's a good question and I wish I could answer it, but we're into a time, very bad time. Contractors we talked to and that, it's all got lots of work. And we can't control that, so I can't answer that question. However, if you approve tonight, there is some parts of it that we would, can get started with as soon as it's approved. But we talked to electricians, we talked to builders and, you know, they say, well, right now we got a full plate. So that is going to be a problem for us and we know that.
Sure, I have a question. I had a question and certainly from a design perspective, it goes with the period and the outside, but from a fire safety perspective, will the floor be concrete?
Yes.
And then will the interior walls be, because they do have fireproof walls, that you could still render to the time period such that, you know, it still looks old, but be extremely fire resistant, right, from inside?
To answer your question, Dan, we do not have to have, because the fire department has proved this. Now, if we was going to have, when we started out, because we really wanted a working blacksmith shop. But when we got into it, the fire department and the insurance company both said that we would have to have a water suppression system in here. Plus, we would have to have where the forge would be, we would have to have a brick or a fireproof wall sometime. And we just thought that was more than we could talk. Because when I asked the question, especially the fire chief, I said, how expensive is a water suppression system? And they's answer was, he said, I can't give you an exact number, but he said it's a lot of cost.
Yeah.
So we never pursued it to the fact that I can't give you an exact figure of how much more of a cost. If you notice, our requirements are that we cannot have a fire inside.
Okay.
Both by village code, fire code, insurance code. So we have, we already have a portable forge that we will use outside and the code on all three areas is the fire has to meet 10 foot from the building and 10 foot from anybody observing. So there will not be any fires inside the building. And we've done that, it's like I just explained. Explained financially, we just knew that it was way above our, our.
So the forging then would be also outside?
Yes, has to be 10 foot from the building.
Well, the forge itself, but when it comes to actually, I would say tempering the steel and pounding the steel, that would also have.
That would have to be outside too.
Okay.
In other words, the forge and the handle are going to have to be outside.
All right.
No fire inside the building. Yes. And that's been spelled out, like I say, from both the fire chief, the building inspector and the insurance.
Excuse me, one last question. How are we, how are we paying for this?
We're going to, we're not asking the village. We are going to have to have donations. Now, if you'll notice on that sheet that you got in here there, we've already got $7,500 in in-kind services. Basically, these plans of $1,000, he donated that. The excavator, his plan is $3,500, he's donating that. The electrician, which we have a licensed electrician, we have, Grisley Electric, will do this for us. His proposal is around $3,000. Now, what his proposal is, that it'll be done by journeymen electricians. All labor will be donated. Any, and he has quite a supply of overrun material from odd jobs or other jobs, he will donate that. The only thing we will have to pay the electrician is if he has to buy something specific to the job, we will have to pay for that. And the reason these in-kind services are so important is that if you'll notice in there that that and the DDA, there is a grant available. I mean, it's there and we still kind of try to get it, as you understand. And some good information in that is we've been informed is in-kind service. So we feel really good about the amount of in-kind service we've got, donated. And we've had some, just come to my attention today and I can't, some of the landscaping, like if you'll notice in your picture, the blocks out front were people, the forge left me a center. We've been, can enjoy us today and we could get some very good help with that, but I don't have a figure on that because it's just that, it's just that, you know.
So, thank you. And as usual, you and your team have done your own.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
I did see, I do not see, because I didn't read off the cover sheet, that you will have to have this, either some at Pat or some at block area down the town. I didn't see that noted on the site plan.
It was not on the site plan because.
We were so.
Not decided exactly where it's going to go yet.
Oh, the block area and that, we know where it's going to go.
Okay.
But we did not get that figure in tight together because we didn't. Some of it was brought to our attention through the insurance company. We just got that figured, from that builder's got that for us where he left. And Dave Klauffus just gave us his final input on how far the fire network is. So it does not, it does not, to answer your question, but it will be there. You'll have to, you'll have to trust us.
Should we assume it just can be out in front of the area?
No, you don't have to assume that. That definitely, of course, could be.
That's the only reason I was asking.
Yeah, I mean, it always makes sense. Come out the big door where they can roll the stuff out. So it just, it couldn't be possible if we're around.
Okay.
I was going to say, I see Courtney holding her hand up a couple times, probably representing the DDA.
Yes.
We.
I'll come up to the podium.
We had meetings with the DDA.
Courtney McLaren, President of the Ortonville DDA, we are fully committed and in full support of the Old Mills Blacksmith Shop projects. We have already started working on a grant proposal for the Flagstar Bank grant, which will be about $2,500. We also have several smaller grants that the DDA funds to help them, so I think.
About $4,052.
So about $4,000 total that we'll be able to help them with. The Flagstar grant is a matching grant and we are looking into, as Mr. Sutton said, whether or not the in-kind services can be considered as part of the matching portion, which will better the grant, meaning more money for them to work with. So we're committed to helping them raise the funds as well in any way that we can through fundraising opportunities as well as grant opportunities that we are providing for them.
We already have, and we have some money. We're not busted. We don't have enough to pay for it, but we do have some money. And we've had numerous people say that, right, to help us. So, you know, money hasn't been our big worry about this. We just felt really good, you know, we done the schools, $40,000 and.
Lost 20.
Pardon? We lost some of it.
I got it. Stay right there. Ron, did you want to address the electric permit request?
I can address that.
She's going to take care of that for us. She's got.
I thought you were going to get down on your knees and beg.
No, I might ask, but I'm not going to beg. I do, there is another thing that you people should be aware of is where the building is going to sit. There's two trees. And we've discussed this matter about, nobody wants to cut the trees down. And Bill and Bob and I have discussed it with the rest of the committee, all feels that we didn't want to just cut the trees down. So Bill and Bob have looked around the village quite a little to see, we were committed that we would move them if they, you know, had a place for them. They don't find a good place the village to put them. So Fred Weybrand from the township has told us that he would like them and he will move them at no expense to us, so the trees will be safe. They will believe in the village, but they will be safe. And that is a concern to us. We, we just didn't want to go in there and chop down a couple of trees.
What kind of trees are these, Ron?
One is a flowering tree, one is a cedar, and one is a flowering tree. Somebody, Bob Hotfels told me the name four or five times, but I, I'm sorry about that. I thought I had that shut off. They're right on the west side of the school. One is a flowering tree of some kind. Dan and I can't tell you the name of the others. They're nice trees.
My recommendation to council at the first, okay, look, if the trees are saveable and they aren't flowering, they're beautiful, I'd hate to just give them away. We just want to make sure that do we for sure, don't have a place to put them in the village and maybe give us a little more time to consider where we could put them before we just give them away?
Yeah.
They're going to the township park.
That's where they'll go if they, yeah, we tell Fred and he's ready to do it anytime. I just, I left that up to Bill and Bob. I did not tour the village looking for a spot. And I, that was their, their, I think they cost about, the last I figured out here, they cost about, if we paid for them, it costs about $300 a tree. So that's $600.
You know, I just think about the space that we're going to have once the skate park is removed and maybe some flowering trees over there might look nice, I don't know, but we're going to have, we're going to have a place over there too. So I just want to just, before we're quick to give them away, is there, is there someplace in the village we can benefit from outside of taking them to the township? I just want to call for council to consider that, so.
The only, only thing, and there's no time limit except we can't do nothing, so.
Right.
You know, and.
When do you plan on breaking ground?
Pardon?
When do you plan on breaking ground to start this building?
Well, it's just as soon as the trees are gone and I'll get the contractors. And I don't, the first thing we're going to do, we're going to pour a four inch slab with two foot.
Puttings.
Puttings, thank you. And that's the first thing. And the Historic Society has got faith enough in this project that we're willing to go ahead and do things like that, even if we don't have a full $20,000. So that would be the first thing and I would think that would happen rather soon if we get the trees.
Well, I'm confident that Bob and Bill know what they're doing and they've checked it out and they're not able to. If there's by chance another idea that someone's come up with recently, then.
I just want you to know, I'm telling you truthfully, I did not tour the village looking. I left that strictly up to them, so.
I trust Bob judgment, I'm glad to. And for that matter, if it goes to the township park as part of the tree library there, I think that's also a good place for where our people in our community still would be able to take advantage and enjoy them there too.
If you know Bob well, you know Bob would want to come down.
I appreciate that.
Because he loves, he loves trees.
Ron, I have one final question. Now that the season's really started to kick up and everything, what does the Historical Society meet, you know?
We do the second Tuesday each month. And, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, Mark. We would like very much to have a representative from the council, so that our meetings, we used to have one, but since the councilman.
Saliva.
Saliva resigned, we don't have one. And that would have been very useful to us because, believe you me, this was beat around a lot at our meetings.
You meet in the morning though, don't you?
No, we do not. We meet at seven o'clock, second Tuesday each month. And we don't meet through the after Christmas village. We don't meet again then until April.
Well, I am, I am a member of, or representative from the village. However, when I went to look at when you met, there was nothing on the website. It was just recently put out there and April I wasn't able to make the meeting for me because I was out of town, but I am a member there.
Glad to hear that. Well, hopefully.
And if nobody offers to me to let me know, then I asked Bill, I was like, okay, where are the meetings? And he never got back with me, but it sits now out on your website.
So that's, that's a good point. You know, and you know, I knew you knew about this project because Bill, Bill brought it up through the several, I didn't treat it for some time. Just one last thing, then I'll shut up. We would like to see some effort made on cleaning up the creek bank alongside of our property down there. You know, the reason the village of Ortonville is here is because of Cursin Creek. If it wasn't for Cursin Creek, there wouldn't be a village here. And we don't do a very good job, myself included, I'm not picking on anybody, of showing off our creek in Ortonville. And we don't have a mighty fine looking campus down there. And if we could get that creek bank cleaned up and looking a little nicer, I think it would be a real asset for the village.
You know, Ron, I agree with you on that, but we have addressed some things, especially during the master plan, what we can actually physically get in there and remove and all that, like branches and all that. And so there's like a real gray area of what we're allowed to do.
It's up to the property owners that.
Well, the only spot we're talking about, Dan, is from Mill Street to the edge of the Old Mill prop. Excuse me, the Old Mill property. And there's some things, some things down there that would be controversial and we're certainly not wanting to see any trees go, but we're talking about brush and stuff that would just make it look nicer.
We just have to be sensitive, make sure that, that there's. We just have to be sensitive, make sure that, that there's not gonna be any issues with any state regulations along.
Well, I don't know. If you look, and how nice the creek does look up by Merron Park, it's really an asset to the creek, just take a peek at that. We're not pushing it, we're just, we're dropping hints tonight.
Well, we have a couple of resources we can check with that would be well knowledgeable on what could and couldn't.
And I don't think it's as bad as you say, because I go down there, and when we walk our dog, he likes to jump into the water there, that little spot right along the edge of the creek there, too, down there.
Well, I think you're watching the dog instead of looking at the brush up there.
Well, I mean, it's. I'd like to make a motion to approve the addition of a black.
Thank, thank you for that.
For us. I'd like to make a motion to approve the addition of a black smith's shop utility building on the grounds of the Old Mill Museum, as proposed, presented by the Orangeville Community Store. Everybody wants to spark that one.
All right. Liz, can we have some quick information on that? Electric permit? So we can kinda throw that in here?
Well, actually, we don't have to worry about his request to wait fees, because this is village-owned property. It will be a village building. They do need to pull permits, and there will be no charge for the permits.
And I just wanted to acknowledge.
Yes, however, we will have to pay the inspectors to go out to inspect unless the inspectors would like to donate their services for the inspection, then we would not have to pay their fee. And they have done that for everything, so.
We've been told very many that if we had to pull permits, same as anybody else.
Yes.
And we expected that. That's no problem.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions, discussion of this at all?
Who supported you?
All right. That would be a motion made by Councilman Ashman and supported by Councilman Ruffinsen.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries on that seven-zero? Thank you very much, all of you, for your support on this.
Just one more thing, I guess. If I say, or the committee says tomorrow Fred that he can move out the trees, is that, and I, I don't agree or disagree with that, but it is the first thing we have to do.
You know what? I'd like to just have one more last look. If we can benefit and keep that beauty in the village, I'd love to do it. But I, I get it. We all trust Bob. They all do a great job. But if anybody out there has a spot for these beautiful trees before we ship them out, please bring them forward, because we can move them just that quick, right? So that's just why.
So what are the timeframe being on it? What are the timeframe being on it?
If they're gonna be doing it soon, we gotta do it within the next day or two. Any recommendations other than taking them out to the, to the park?
We, we have one. Some comes, well, sure enough.
You can, I just, I have confidence in those.
Can you wait one week before we move out?
One week from today.
I think that'd be fair.
Well, maybe not, because one week from today is a holiday, so.
We'll wait, are you?
All right, so if you just don't mind coming to the office and verifying in a week, and if you have not heard from us, which you will in a week, before we start. How's that? Fair?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're excited to see it. It looks beautiful already. All right. Thank you very much for coming as well. Next up, we have our DDA Director appointment. And the DDA has made a request to us, and I would like to go ahead and pass that up, and we will bring up Courtney McLaren, and we have Kim Hill.
Okay, so once again, Courtney McLaren, President of the Orangeville DDA. We are in unanimous support of recommending Ms. Kim Hill from Hill Building and Hill.
Decor.
Decor, right here in the village, for appointment to the DDA Board of Directors. We find that Kim brings to the table a lot of ambition, creative and innovative ideas, as well as experience, and being a business owner from the village limits here, really adds to our board, the running of our board. So again, we are in unanimous support of our recommendation for Kim to be Board of Directors.
And everybody does have their profile included, so if you have. Well, I guess we should have a motion and then proceed to ask questions. Let's do it the correct way.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Kim Hill to the Board Lifestyle Studio to the DDA Board of Directors, class of 2023. Support.
All right. Any questions for Kim? Or Courtney? Well, Kim's our starter, so. Any questions?
I'm just curious, you know, just to have a question. Do you live in the community as well?
Yes, live at 225 South Hadley, and I've lived here for over 25 years. Raised our boys here. They started kindergarten and graduated from Brandon in '06 and '09. So we're locals and.
And your business is located at?
Is at 457 Mill Street. I'm Hill Decor and Lifestyle Studios. I do like home decor and decorating, and companion with my husband, Jim Hill, who is a builder, local builder, and he does custom homes and additions. So we're blessed to be here in the community where we've grown up and grateful ourselves, too. Grown up here in 30 years and raised our boys, so we're thankful to be part of the town. Thank you.
I do wanna compliment you on the building that you've done downtown. It, it looks great. It's been a terrific improvement. Very, very nice, Ron.
Thank you very much.
So, any further questions? All right, hearing none. Can, we have a vote, please? We have a motion on the table from Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman George. She'll appoint Kim Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we welcome you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is the rezoning of the parcel that was formerly known as BFI Us, which is 300 South Street. And you have the information for that included in your packet. That was presented to Planning Commission, and that is now passed along to us to approve the rezoning of the parcel.
Is it this one right here?
Yes. You'll see the rezoning application, and you will see on the first page will be the information from Planning Commission. We also have with us Pam Patterson, and she is representing Barry Nass, who's unable to make it this evening, and so she will be available as well for questions and anything that you have for us.
So I have a question. What is the property gonna be used for?
It's gonna be a sports facility, mainly basketball tournaments, dance recitals, soccer fields. We're using the building as it stands existing. We're not making any alterations to it at this point in time.
So would it also be a community center?
Potentially. There'll be rooms to be able, I mean, the classrooms could be rented or be able to be used for, you know, yoga or any type of, anything that, you know, would fall within our guidelines.
And then what, what type of timing do you have for, do you convert that facility to a sports?
We're working on it currently, cleaning and painting. And then our next step is to have our building inspection, and hopefully we can fly, pass that with flying colors and proceed.
So is it, are you talking one month, two months, six months?
It's all dependent on our building inspection. So it is all existing, so I'm hoping that that will be, you know, that everything's existing in the building. We haven't altered or changed any of the footprint or any of the walls in the building, so I'm hoping that most of everything will be allowed as is. We have all of the fire suppression and everything that was needed for it to be a school, so it's just, I'm hoping that those will follow us into this.
Into this sports.
It has not been decided yet, but that would be opposed to the village prior to our opening, getting our CBO, they would have us saying that.
Do we have any limitations on signage that they're putting up?
They would call it, right, the same ordinance as. Once we change the zoning, they will then follow the commercial.
Right.
Because currently it's not zoned for their own.
And then, and then you're already talking a, an access right directly off of M15?
Yes, that is something that we would like to do. We've been talking with the village library. They also would like to join with us and have an access, which will put down some traffic, people cutting through the car wash and the bank, and all those things, too.
And then, what, do you have to go into Oakland County for a permit to do that?
Absolutely, yes. So at this point, we can't do anything with the building because it's zoned public, which means that it is owned and used for students or libraries. So our first step is to get the zoning changed, and then we can start our process getting our business on it.
Hey, I got a question for you. I know Barry wanted to report on the friends scoreboard back in January 2018.
Yes.
And thought he would have that building fully up operational by fall of 2018, including a first-class restaurant in there. What, from your standpoint, why has it taken so long? Why is nothing gonna happen?
We are currently still working with Consumers Energy of getting it the electric bill in our name. We've had several hoops to try to get it out of public, a public entity into a private. So there's been some, those have been some things. There were also some equipment missing or, I don't know. There were some things that, that had to be repaired after the school left. And so we've done those minor repairs, and we're just, and it just wanted to hire me. So, and then I got on, as soon as I was hired, I contacted Liz and got the follow-up.
Yeah, how long have you been in that position, the position right now?
With Barry, I worked pulling for Bottom Lock.
So are you the project coordinator, the project lead? What are?
I am the director of BLB Enterprises, LXC.
Good. Well, I was just gonna ask, a few of us have noticed a bunch of cars parked around back and all that, and I, I live adjacent there, so I had concerns with a lot of activities aiming out back there.
It was, Barry granted a favor to the owners of Recocast as they were repairing and redoing some working in their parking lot to move some of their cars there. It was a temporary thing. He did not know that there was an ordinance or anything that prohibited him from doing that. They allowed him to do it for a short period of time. That's not going to be an occurrence. So we're hoping to use the facility for a sports event center and, and event center.
Got one more last question. You had presented to council tonight that it's gonna be a sports center. Trustee George said, oh, there's gonna be a restaurant in there, too. Is a restaurant also part of the plan?
I, I'm not sure. At some point, yes. At this point, we would have to go through and get our licensing for that. There is a functioning kitchen, and it would be nice to have some food in there for our patrons to be able to have food as they watch basketball tournament or, you know, something like that. But that would be something that we would come back to the township, or the village, and have approved prior to doing that. But at this point in time, our opening for our CBO, we will not have that. That'll be a later project.
So with the initial step of this, it is to change the zoning. What they choose to do with it currently is a commercial sports center. If anything is to change, they then have to come back through and, you know, request acknowledgement, something along that line. So this is just the first step before we get to all of the future steps and what it could or couldn't be, is just to decide whether we choose to. Keep it as is, which we should.
I'm just still concerned as to why it would take a year and a half to get a somewhat changed from a commercial to a just things that have been very excessive. I know you stepped in, but it's, that's all not to excuse.
But it sounds to me like you're close to being, going for a, right? Within the next month or two?
Oh, yeah. I'm hoping tomorrow I'm going to call Liz and send my building inspection.
Well, we're gonna be dealing.
Yeah, so, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning of parcel 03-18-102-06, also known as 300 South Street, from current flat zoning of public to M15 corridor commercial. Support.
Any further questions or comments? All right. We have a motion on the table from Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Butsu, to change the zoning of the parcel. Can we have a roll call over there? George?
It's staying.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Swardakoff?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Butsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. And that will be. What else? That's, that is all a six, it doesn't make a difference, but it carries. Six, six, wash. All right, I don't realize it's a six, sorry. Um, yep. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
With the future development. Item D is the master plan approval, and with us this evening, we do have Susan Cronander, and she will be able to answer any questions that we have for our next steps or technical questions or what that will look like as we pass it on to the local communities.
Susan, are you with McKenna?
I am with Susan.
Yeah.
Susan, are you aware of the amount of errors and things that we corrected in our workshops with the master plan after it went out of the Planning Commission's hands?
I'm aware of some of them. But, yeah, I will, I will be in communication with Liz.
I was gonna say, that was the point to where we regressed in the, sorry, I don't regret or suspect.
Right.
The amount of money that we spent on putting this plan, or your assistance in this plan, and then the number of errors was just, just amazing for the amount of money and to have a professional organization do that for us.
Well, I, I truly apologize for that, for sure. We tried to catch everything we possibly could all the way through the process. I joined the process, I think, in October, if you can, so.
Kind of lay out what it would look for us, what's, now we're at this point, what does it look like? Would the procedures pass in a lot of the local community, and then what are the next steps?
So right now, where you're at is approval or not to be sent out to adjacent jurisdictions and accounting for their comments. And that would be a 63-day period. And then when it comes back, it would go to the planning commission, and they would approve it or not by resolution. And then you also have the option to approve it at that point, which I would suggest, since you've been so involved, you probably should, so. And everybody has put a lot of work into this, obviously, so.
With the, with all the updates that council has made, who, who has like started verifying, Liz, have you verified these changes that have been updated? Or, because you took a lot of notes.
Yep. The, the changes that are in the plan, you should have received and reviewed. Those were the, all the changes that you, as the council had requested. There is the one change that the planning commission requested that is flagged in your packet. That has not been given to McKenna yet, so once it's been given to McKenna, I would then have to review it and confirm that all the changes were made.
Yes, Mark, the planning commission also went through the whole plan, including all the changes the council made, and we went through each of the changes that were made and reviewed them during the planning commission's second review after council was finished with every revision. There was that, just that one minor change that was mentioned that has a tab on it. There was that, just that one minor change that was mentioned that has a tab on it where we need to get help in elementary schools because we don't have that immediate school.
And as we mentioned earlier, a minor thing with the skate park, which no longer exists.
And just make schools singular, just delete the S.
So if trustee, you mentioned about now is not the time to remove the skate park. Why wouldn't it be now?
I said now, it would be perfectly okay for us to amend that, remove skate park now. And once, we could then pass and approve the plan as amended at this meeting. And that would be perfectly acceptable. Since it's a minor revision, does not affect any of the intent of the plan. There's no need to have court.
And that is something that's not legal.
So this was, this particular version was put in this Friday, that was right. So I haven't had time to go back and review our workshop notes to what edited version this presents today, right, for any errors, et cetera. So I'd like to be given some time to at least go back and review this. I mean, all this time has been put in there. I just want to make sure that what we did agree to in our workshop is in fact, what you're having today.
There was a one sentence change from that point. That's the only thing the planning commission did, was to delete the elementary intermediate schools and make the word say school. That's the only change.
I assume that they had referred to our updates, just make sure that they were all addressed.
And I would like to, I would like to share with the council that in the process of reviewing all the updates, Liz and Bill were both there and they stepped, one step by step through all of their notes. Tammy and I were there and we participated in those workshops and we had our own notes. And we did check out each of the updates that we had that had been made and recommendations for the changes that actually were in this plan.
Like the maps and all that?
It still says Village Park and not Wildlife Preservation Park. When we were in the.
That will be addressed with McKenna. We just don't have maps.
Yeah, that's, how do we, how do we know it's going to be addressed that's not in front of us, right?
Right.
She actually.
So that's my point is, we don't know what's being addressed if it's not in front of us. And if it's going to be addressed, I had to ask for it and it's not here. So we really don't know what we're approving, right? Because we don't know what's actually been changed yet.
Well, and it should be substantially exactly the way you want it before you do send it out for comment. Because when it does come back after the 63-day review period, what technically by law, there's no planning jail, obviously, but technically by law, what should be addressed? Are the comments coming back from the county or the road commission, et cetera?
So you're recommending we make these changes first and then we.
If you, if you're not comfortable and you feel like you should, yes, that's what I would recommend.
All right, thank you.
So it goes to the county and the road commission simultaneously during the 63 days?
Yes.
Okay, so they both give it at the same time?
Yes, correct.
So I'd like to have time from the, as recommended, have time to update what we said in our workshop and then review it and then always put it out to the public as recommended by McKenna.
So is the suggestion that it's going back to planning commission to make the changes? Or is that, that you would like to make the changes and then send it to planning?
We're gonna do that.
That's right.
Say it again, because everyone's talking.
We don't want to start the clock, you know, too soon, you know what I mean, so.
So is it going to go back to the planning commission to make the changes? Or is it council is going to review?
Everything's been changed. I was under the assumption that you want to review the changes.
It's a validation of the changes.
Right. And in the meantime, I can try and get the maps from.
So is it other than.
They're removing the skater.
Other than the maps, all the changes that had been, which requested are already in this.
Correct, but you need time to review it. I mean, you guys need to get on the tent, right?
Yes. I think that's a good idea. I think we, because there's a lot of maps in there.
And I have a note to remove references to skate park.
All right.
That's right. And schools.
Just tilt the tent, right?
So we are tailing this until June 10th. This will be added then. That'll give everybody a chance to review it. And, yeah. Any other questions, Kristen and Bill?
As always, feel free, contact Liz, she'll contact you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Next up, you have. I'm going to ask the excuse, thank you for your kind attention. We will not disappoint you.
Thank you.
You got it very thorough about everything.
Yeah, we've got the family pool and we'll do the same thing.
I would like to say, looking at that artist concept, I'm thinking, wow, I can just see how many cool events we can add close to there. Christmas and all kinds of things, that's.
Blacksmithing has become very, very popular with young men. And so this is a good place to put it.
Thank you very much.
No, I'm sorry, one last question. Is there any type of special foraging that you plan on doing?
No, we have a gentleman.
Well, no, I didn't know if you were, you know.
We have a gentleman on Bringe Road, Tom Rogers. And he is a certified blacksmith. And he has offered to help us and possibly even give some classes.
Also to bring the youth involved, that's a very good idea.
Very nice.
It'll be exciting. Item E is our resolution to adopt local pavement warranty program. And you will see, you do have a copy of that and that is to be signed.
I have it to pass down once you pass it.
As Liz passes it. So everybody has a copy. Liz is passing down the original.
Can I ask a question about this? As with any warranty program, you go buy something, right? Oh, you want a warranty, it's going to cost you extra dollars. So is this warranty going to cost us anything?
No.
No? And is it a warranty that we're being, we're signing up for so that any work that's done in the village, we have to have a war, I guess I don't understand the warranty program. So what does this mean when we're signing up this warranty program? Are we saying that any bids now a warranty? Or I don't know what that means.
I don't recall having this before. Is this new?
Yes, this is in 2018. That was when they started.
And it's required by Michigan law.
I don't know.
So it was done in 18, but we didn't have one in 18.
Is there a time limit on this? Or, I mean.
It has to be done before the 18th of September of this year, the resolution.
Is there anything preventing us from doing it now, especially since it's recorded by law?
I was going to say that about when it comes to the grants and everything.
I don't want to stop deciding, but I'd like to understand what this program is. Obviously, it's okay, it's a warranty program, but I don't know if we sign it up.
Here, this is what came in from the MML.
So there's some documentation.
No.
No, not.
No, it's.
Additional information.
Here are other.
If it's manual, maybe I'd like to understand how it's going to.
It looks like I did a great.
Well, it almost sounds reasonable, especially since there has been issues in the past with some roads.
So I make a motion to adopt the local pavement warranty program resolution 2019-0520, as presented.
What is, I have a question here.
Hold on a second. All right, now go right ahead. Any questions?
Who's important?
Ashman, I'm sorry.
In the third paragraph, I'm looking at the last sentence there. And guidelines, no local agents, what is the BOE?
That's what I was wondering too. Is that a typo or what is it?
It sounds like a female.
Nine lines, no local agents.
It could be a typo.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it is.
Trustee Ashman being on the streets, you haven't heard of this before.
That should be kept in the public camp.
Did I get the original back to you, Beth? Did I get the original back to you? I don't, yeah.
If it is just a typo, I just, I just think we probably should.
Why would, yeah, I'll fix that. I'm sure it's a typo.
Yeah, I'm sure it probably is.
All of this, as amendment. Sorry, any questions? We're waiting on my end.
The word should be four.
That makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was typing self-casaded, no one was doing it. Any further questions?
It does look, there is some financial impact to the village. Just briefly reading over this, the MML definition. So I guess we just need to understand, I think we should probably fully understand it for next week too. I mean, if it's a, if we can't change it, we got to do it and it's mandated. Is that what they, that's what we told by the state?
Yeah. Must be adapted by every community no later than September 19. Every community must consider a warranty on each product, each project utilizing any state or federal funding. So it's.
All right.
Any, any funding.
From the state.
Federal, state or federal. All right, any other questions? All right, and motion is on the table by Councilman Bryce and supported by Councilman Ashman. And all in favor? Motion carries, seven, zero. I will correct that typo and have it for you as a G10 meeting, if that's okay?
Do we need to include the MCL, the entire number for the MCL?
Yes, that is part that was taken right from their form, so.
So we only need the first six characters? We don't need?
Yeah, that is just taken exactly from their form and put on our letterhead with my nice little area for you guys to sign. All right, next up is the public hearing for the budget. And we also are including the master plan review of the changes as well.
I make a motion to schedule a public hearing, your public input on proposed projects of this for your 2019, year 2020 on Monday, June 10th, 2019, 7:00 PM at Brandon Township office. And also to include approval of the master plan in the agenda.
Should that be two separate motions? Because one's a public hearing for the budget and the other one is just to hand on the agenda of the master plan, which is a part of the public hearing.
And that doesn't even have to be a motion either?
Yeah.
We don't need that as part of the motion, but that's okay.
Support for that, anybody?
Support.
All right.
Six, three.
It says seven, seven.
All right, motion made by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman George. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero. And next is the discussion on the E packets. We kind of touched on that a little bit about, well, we were talking about the budgeting. And we have information in there.
Oh, that's not on this agenda.
It's on the agenda.
It's not on this agenda, it's on this one.
Right, it's on the agenda for G and you have information there included as to how you might like to receive it. And the initial.
Where's the G, it's on this?
On the, it's on the agenda under G right here, which is new business. And the conversation was as to whether how you'd like to receive it, not to force an E packet, but to see who would like to try it, who would like to see what they think. And whether you'd like to receive maybe both ways, one way, whoever you'd like to receive it. So that was the initial thought. We'll look for feedback.
So we're not, we're not proposing that we go all one way or another. So for those that do not wish to have the E or hard copy, hard copy, it can still be.
As we were talking about, you know, some people have made time, you may be somewhere where you know you're not going to have it, or you choose not to and you'd like to pay for it. It's, it's all a choice. A couple of people were thinking maybe try a couple of months both ways and, you know, start to figure it out and see how to fill it out. But like I said, just the initial conversation of the time saving, the money saving, the amount. What did Bill estimate, fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars? Is going into something along that lines.
If you look at the dispersment report, we had the.
We had four hundred and some dollars and this, this person's report tonight actually for copies.
For January, February.
This could be something that if, like I wanted to receive it electronically, it'd save those a few dollars. It's not made huge amounts, but all the time they can handle, you know, decorations for Christmas.
He was still getting electronically, he's not going to sign it.
My view is, we take a lot of notes here and for us, if we receive.
Let's still get a copy of that.
I was just going to say, what the vision is, what would come to you is the agenda with notes, any physical mail that has come into the village and items that, you know, would supplement, say somebody comes in and, you know, gives us items that just stepped up like rocket or whatever, all of those items would be a possibility.
Of course, I assume that even if I'm, choose to give electronic, but there's a specific item that I would like to print it out, I could rather request that and have a table. But it wouldn't require a printed hard copy of all the items at every time that exists. The village, and for the time of those.
And can we pray to whether it can, et cetera? But again, it's a choice, but just to decide whether that's something to try, that's the question.
Also, I don't know how everybody else feels, but boy, I got a stockpile, you know, old paperwork and all that stuff.
Can I spray it to the office? We have a secure destruction bin we can throw it to.
I mean, sometimes it is nice to go back on your notes, you know, but for sure.
It's either that or go back in your computer and find it.
Yeah.
That's, that's the downside, I mean, and then you're going to have to, it's hard, right? You know that, Barry.
You can word search on vacuum.
Pardon me?
You can word search on vacuum by command.
The cloud storage gone out there, the storage is getting cheaper and cheaper.
Okay. So does anybody have any concerns with choosing to try that out for those that choose to?
I prefer, for my, I'm still old school. I like my hard copies. I like to write notes all up here and page through it. To do it without that electronically, you were proposing that we bring our laptops here.
And phones or tablets.
So, I mean, again, I'd prefer to have my hard copies. Don't have a laptop, bring it.
And I certainly would agree with that. Anybody, we should have our choice. It shouldn't be that we have to do it one way or the other. Because it's good to have flexibility and sort of want to change however we want to do it.
So Liz has created a form to do that. If you would like to just kind of throw out there how you would like to receive it, that can be changed at any time. Like I said, I know a couple of people mentioned, oh, I might like to try it out for a couple of months and see if we're still the same boat, just to have that cushion. So that's there. And as we mentioned, what if the internet goes out or something along that lines? Liz will always have a hard copy and you can download it as a PDF and have that available beforehand. So if there is no internet access, we're safe as well. Chances are that we may not be electricity. If there is internet access, we would be here, so, you know, six, oh, one, half, doesn't matter. Any other questions? There are comments on the air?
So we're talking about communication, I know there was another sheet out there that we chose for texting and or emails, right? So could we have one sheet that says, okay, here's what council wants to do for each of these types of communications?
Sure, and have it compiled to give it back, so everybody knows what's, what's up good.
So we can just do that in June 10, right? One, one sheet to have everything?
Right. And thank you, Liz, for putting that together as well. Next up, we have our unfinished business, and that would be the trash hauling proposed ordinance, Pat George.
Here we go. I think we, we can make this real quick.
We start a timer.
That doesn't happen. I used to talk to kids like, can you give me five minutes, that you, you can't pick your day off, but. What we have in front of us here is the waste hauler project Saturday sheets, and we did not get our copies, it was the last time, all this subsequent, but not there in electronics, or this, blah, blah, blah. I don't need to go over page one on this at all, but if you flip it over to page two, on the conclusions and recommendations. Now, we discussed this last meeting, so I can make this real quick. Community disposal currently has sixty percent, or better, of the residential trash hauler business in Orangeville. People like them and want to stay with them. Recommendations, here's, here's, here's the bottom line on this, from a recommendation standpoint. It is, it is nothing that I did or whatever, I think, I think the banana specialist hit us in a good way. Basically, the two things I think we want to do is get the trash hauling down, the residential trash hauling down for a long day, and, and the preferred day is Monday, because there currently is communities, and they have the bulk of the business. So I'm hoping that, that this will be the done deal, that we switch over to Mondays. The second thing I would like to do, and again, I think, I think we're there, is, we said the whole intent upon this in the beginning was, too many trucks, too many companies operating, things like that. We've got a situation now where we have four trash haulers, residential trash haulers operating in the village. So now all of them will, will pick up on Monday. I think right now is a good time from an ordinance standpoint to limit the number of haulers. I mean, right now, I know it's been brought, Tanya, I know you're in favor, this isn't what anybody wants to come in, come in, but my honest feeling there is, is that's what we're, that's what we're honestly trying to avoid. So here, here's the deal now, on ordinances here, if you take a look at the last sheet right here, and I'll tell you what, I was not aware, we talked about ordinances today on certain topics, I was never aware that we already had ordinance on the books, on trash hauling, you could say, a little light on research, but I never heard anything from Bill. You know, Bill was always saying, we're gonna write an ordinance, we're gonna write an ordinance. It's, we got an ordinance on trash hauling. So rather than reinvent the wheel, and, and Bill did, at the very end, get, get a piece of that ordinance, a revision of the, of the existing ordinance, and that's it, bam, we're good. So we don't have to, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I give you just pieces of that ordinance, it's, it's number fifty, chapter fifty, and you go out there on the website, which I did one morning at 2:30 on that day, where I woke up, and I ended up on ordinances, and I followed it down, and that's just the way life goes. And then I, then I see what Bill had, and I think, well, for God's sake, this is, this is, this is a slam dunk. So basically, I put the intent on the solid waste management, chapter fifty, fifty point zero one is the intent and purpose of this. And, okay, nice document, and pretty much what we have. Definitions on fifty point oh four, a solid waste hauler. And all I'm saying is, is what I would propose, that we do what I think is, is the delivery or the pickup date will be, we'll go to Monday, and we'll limit the number of haulers. And right now, I think three is a good number. People, when we have that town hall meeting, people still want the choice. We're not changing anything as far as individuals being able to contract with individual haulers, you know, the homeowners and that. I think that's terrific, I think it's just a win-win. Right now, we currently have four haulers, and you'll see, and the part that's been read is my, my amendment to the existing ordinance, whether, whether I have that exactly right or how the procedures, I don't know, but that was my intent. So I'm saying here, under definitions of the solid waste haulers, that effective July 1st, 2019.
Why should he say?
Well, thank you. If the maximum number of, of companies providing residential solid waste services will be limited to three. However, initially, we will grandfather in the four current residential waste haulers, so we're not cutting anybody out at the beginning. But I think we all know, it's been brought up a couple times, that waste management is brought out advanced, so my guess is that'll go down to two. We also know the TNR is pretty small, and they might subsequently decide to drop, that's, that's just wrong, as I hear. So when we go down to three, I think that's a good number, it gives the citizens still an opportunity to get the best deal that they can. Now, here's the deal right here, I have this in here, each company will require to pay an annual permit fee. Remember last week I said two fifty, remember Dan, where they put that number, that was a swag number? I'll tell you what, which is the fine tune it. I know, Tanya, I've talked to you, you don't want to charge them anything, and you know what, under the present circumstances, I agree with you. I do not want to see some waste hauler get all in a stint, or in fact, they got a dinner, twenty-five bucks for, for Bill's important bill, get upset and say, we're not doing it, because right now, Lake Orion, Oxley, Oregon Township are in trouble. Because without jobs pulling out, they, the waste haulers can't pick up the business. The community's been picked up a boatload, and they, they can't handle the business. So I don't want somebody pulling out of Orangeville right now, irritating them on this beat, so I'll back down on that. Okay, we can just strike that out. Then under, under fifty point oh seven, and Bill pointed this out, Tanya, in our communication, fifty point oh seven is what he was referring to. And then again, effective July 1st of nineteen, all residential solid waste collection will take place on Mondays, period. So it all boils down to Monday, Monday is the pickup date, and, and we'll limit the number of haulers to the, to the existing ones, and when they go down to three, that's a maximum. I think it's, I think it's a slam dunk.
I, I have one question, I see Liz making some crazy faces. Sorry, I'm Liz, but I'm, I'm, I'm missing her.
Well, on the Mondays, you have to take in consideration federal holidays, so you need to put in a sentence for federal holidays.
Correct, it would be Tuesday, yes, I agree with that.
And, and Bill, in his email, said.
He doesn't like going down to restricting the number of haulers, does he?
He said I don't.
I don't know why.
Yeah, he says, he thinks there might be some legal issues there with making them pay a registration fee, however.
Right, we got that out now.
Yep.
I, I just, I don't look at it as, as a legal problem, I look at it as, as, I don't want, I don't want to irritate them.
I could see that as a possibility for issues, because if you have a three limited, and we have in our ordinance limited to three, and then we have three in the area already, and somebody wants to start up and is trying to.
I'd take it.
And we say, sorry, you're not allowed to.
You're on the waiting list.
Do business in our community. I mean, I don't know if that could make it something that could be challenged, that could be challenged on this ordinance, because.
All I have is.
Something I think we should probably research a little more before we.
Well, my research says that everybody else around us has one.
Wait, how would we choose, how would we choose who stays and who goes?
Yeah, that's, that's.
And that was.
Right now, we're not choosing, no, Dan.
Well, if we had a four.
Right now, a four, maybe we could go on.
Or three, someone's gotta go.
I don't know. I'm saying that that fourth hauler is grandfathered in, and if and when they go down to three, then those three, the existing three, stay. Now, if you had a situation where waste management takes in advanced, and now we're down to three, and TNR does very little business in the village, and they decide, we're out, we got, we got three of the pastors, and we go down to two, Dan, then it's open again.
But what happens if, if it goes the other way, where suddenly a fourth waste hauler comes in, and they have good competitive pricing, and say, we think we can serve the community better, and, you know, and even if we feel that they might serve our community better, what do we do? I mean, we, it would be really sticky situation, try to tell one of the existing three, oh, well, we're gonna kick you out now, and bring this other focus.
Right, exactly, which is why.
And I, and that's why I would really be concerned with limiting the number of haulers. I mean, it's a different story if we are contracting as a village, one waste hauler to service the community, because then we put out bids, we can, and then we select who we want. But if it's the individuals in the community who are individually picking the trash haulers, I'm not sure how firm our legal ground is to limit it to only three.
I'm saying that, I'm saying the three or four we have right now are existing.
Yes, but I don't know what legal, what legal basis there is for restricting it to three.
And I was going to say, you're gonna tell somebody they can't come in and do business, that's what you're going to get, is, is legal ramifications.
Well, how do other, how do the other villages and, and communities restrict it to one?
They have a contract.
They have a contract.
They contract directly, it's a community-wide contract for the service. We do not have that, if we went that way, which was what the original push was for this whole.
To go one.
Waste ordinance, is to go to one and have it contracted and some kind of be set, and distributed back to the village, into the residents. But we decided not to go that route, and so I think this is, I, I would like to have some.
What if you had, what if you had, today we have four going down to three, maybe going down to two. What if suddenly we went to eight? And, and one of our main reasons for doing this was wearing care on the roads to reduce the number of haulers, like that.
That was, that was the original intent.
Personally, I would prefer to go, to go the route where the village contracts one hauler, but it was decided to hold back from that, and just take the first step, is just setting one common day. I would still like to consider that in the future, and go from whatever number it is down to a single contract waste hauler, where we can get the best value for the residents, and, or the best balance of value and service quality.
And you would never.
Not just the cheapest, but the best.
But you remember why, why we dropped the whole bidding process, right, Larry?
We had resistance from the community.
Community was, community was, yeah, we gotta buy in, and on, and on Ford's end, I think Ford's end, really, were us, that was fine.
Is it fair to say at this point that we're, we're going down to Monday only, that we're already weeding certain businesses out and all that, and then how much competition are you gonna have for one day of weed hauling?
I, yeah, well, I don't, I'm just gonna say this, Mark, I know Bill has contacted personally the four haulers, and all of them have agreed, well, obviously the community, but the other three have agreed Monday would be okay.
So my, my thought on this whole thing, Pat, is, you know, agreed. Originally, we're gonna cut down on the, down the wear and tear on the roads to using one hauler, one day a week. Okay, now you've got three trucks, three companies, all coming, converging on the village on Mondays, all right? Well, we prevent a homeowner from going on vacation on a Friday and put their trash out Saturday, Sunday, only to be picked up on Monday. So your, your ordinance better have a time period in which you can put your.
There is an ordinance, yes.
Help me out.
I think twenty-four hours.
Twelve hours to four, twelve hours after.
There is an ordinance, you can't hit your garbage.
We have taken, I have asked for that, too, haven't we?
Uh, well, I've written letters, you know.
Oh, yeah, we already have that now, too.
Okay, so it's covered in this ordinance, because I didn't see it.
Well, this is just a summit, yeah.
There's, there's a lot of the ordinance. No, no, there's, I say, this is, this is a piece of the ordinance, period, that I think.
But, but Dan, you can, you can go out on your computer and, and, oh, go to the, go to the village site, under, wherever it is, right, list, it's, it's there, if I find it, you can find it. It's a big PDF file, and all the ordinances, bundle it in there, and on some pages or whatever.
Did all of them agree to not start until 7:00 AM?
That's what it currently is.
Well, no, they're coming through, mine is picked up at 6:30. And, and even though the other side is the township, there's another one, and it wakes me up every Monday at 6:30 with their backup lights, or their backup.
I know, they used to come real early, and then I thought that the council passed something that said they cannot come.
It's a noise.
So coming, are you saying this would be an improvement if we got it to seven?
Yeah, but they're, they're coming in first, before 7:00 AM, because mine's picked up before 7:00 AM.
And while you're on that about the times, my concern is when holidays and weather, like those three or four days they were shut down in the middle of winter, they may need more time.
Implement weather, I mean.
I don't think we can say every single time, you know, it has to be this.
We're reasonable.
A regular Monday, a routine Monday would be different than emergency situations. You want to know their truck broke down and they were standing, little things like that, I think are different.
Of course, yeah.
And I think, kind of like Larry said, touching on, competition is healthy. I'm not picking on anybody, we have currently one cable company, we pay a lot more than other people that have three or four cable companies accessed in their neighborhood. So I would like to see we do not limit the trucks. I think, cutting down on the light, like you said, you know, having it out just Sunday, Monday is a huge improvement. Those were our two topics, was lighten the roads, they're not the only ones on the roads, which is my personal issue. The other thing I did want to point out, you keep, I look at here July 1st. My only concern with that is that there are currently a lot of trash issues, like you mentioned, odd jobs and advance with their transitions. There are so many people in the township and the village that can't even get a hauler. All of the haulers have stopped accepting new customers, they are two weeks out, and they haven't even had their garbage picked up. Maybe we need to just wait till that's settled and wait a month or two, so we're not pressuring them in the middle of all of the other mess they have going on, because we do love all of our trash haulers. That would be mainly other factors, is maybe we just need to pick a couple more months out and let them get all of that settled, because they've got huge messes over the next month.
Well, this isn't until July, right?
July 1st, so that only gives them a month to solve all of their, like I said, they're, they're just gathered in, they're just, people are complaining left and right, and, you know, these poor companies aren't accepting anybody right now.
You would have to approve the, in our report, to be effective July 1st. We would have to, could have posted it up, post it, you would have to approve it at the June meeting, so, but it can be done.
But I would like to see it, just, what is one more month, to be fair to those that are working hard.
One other question for Pat, then, we, we got confirmation that the existing haulers can pick up on Mondays. Did we get confirmation from them that they also can pick up at 7:00 AM on Mondays? Or are they gonna pick up all throughout the whole day on Mondays?
Well, you see, we have your, from seven to whatever, seven to six.
Did they get their, did, they're all, not in their head, yes, they can do it in that time period?
Yes. But I will, I, Bill said, basically, they comply with, with the day, and they can.
And the time.
I, I know.
Yeah, I, I thought we already had that window of time from 7:00 AM until whatever.
I know.
We already defined it, currently, it's just switching the day is the only thing that's changing.
And then I just know, again, from the, from the church street perspective, I, I'll see haulers coming late afternoon, but I, it's very, very rare that I'll see any hauler come by for whatever recyclables leaves or.
Make a recommendation, don't sit in front of your window on Mondays.
You know what, you know, they have three haulers picking up out on Fridays, so all we would.
I'm aware of that. Was this the short version? I'm sorry.
My, my thing again, Mark, is, is Mondays and add three haulers.
I like the Mondays.
So we have to come to a consensus, have we all agreed on Mondays?
I think we, I, maybe a consensus for Mondays.
All right, what about the limiting the number of haulers to three, grandfathered in a four?
I would not want to do that, that's my opinion.
Would this be something that we could get a legal opinion on?
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think that would be wise.
Well, I guess, let's, I mean, is that our opinion, that we would look, we would be interested if it's.
Let's start with the four, you know.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, ask and see first, because don't get a legal opinion if we say we're not interested, that's what I'm asking.
I would like to limit it, as long as there's no legal hitch, so, if we can do that legally.
I think it makes sense. I would worry about the selection process, though, if you're gonna weed them out from four to three, I don't know how we're gonna do it legally.
Yeah, if, if there's no illegal hitch, then I would be wanting to change my view on that perspective, but I don't.
For the record, I'm not interested, but we have a consensus to look into, see if that is an option, and what the concerns are, what the suggestions would be in there, so we can do that. And agreed to Mondays.
And if we get a written legal opinion, just per the record.
Just a phone call and.
And hopefully.
An interpretation of a, a written legal opinion.
Bill has, I know Bill has reached out, great time, and was expecting a callback, I don't know specifically what he was asking about, on that particular one.
The example of the ordinance, but fourth, to see if that, what the recommendation was on that, so that wasn't included in their presentation.
But I know on Bill, but I know on Bill, Bill, again, listen to that, Bill's not in favor of that, now, until, he's in favor of this agreement a lot, a lot less, which to me, it's all purpose of reducing the number of haulers on roads.
It's like everybody said, you, we're getting down to it from one day a week. Eventually, people are gonna go, odd job, went out of business, and maybe somebody else will. else will, at least we got one day a week, which is...
That's a great comment. All right, well, we'll definitely continue to pursue that.
Well, that legal dinner, are you talking about our village attorney to provide any... Would it be worthwhile to at least check and see if there's ever something existing from MML or something that might give some answers to our study on those trainings?
I, yes, six, one half doesn't matter. I mean, yes, even if they did, we still need to run what we're choosing to propose by them, so when we run it by, you can, you know...
Well, I mean, if we check with MML and they say, no, this is not supported in your plan, and they can provide information that says it's not, or they say, yes, it's allowed, then maybe we want to also get information. But I mean, if it's clearly not supported, then we don't necessarily have to get that information from our attorney, if we have some other resources to use, because that's all I'm suggesting. Is that okay with everybody else?
Want to go through MML?
Yeah, to see if we can get confirmation, like from MML or something, if there's a restriction, legal restriction.
I don't think they post that information. We can certainly look, but I don't think they put that type of stuff out there.
I didn't find it.
As I said, they had a couple of hauling ordinances on their contracts, examples of contracts.
And some has another resource we can...
All right. Thank you very much, Pat. And next up on our fabulous agenda is the village manager's report.
Hi, I'm Bill Muffin. Our DNR trust fund grant that we have found core. I just wanted to update you and let you know that I heard from Mary Curlock at the DNR, and she wanted to let me know, since she was here last year for a site visit, she will not be here this year and do another site visit, so we don't expect to hear anything on those trust fund grants until September when the points come out.
But we had, didn't we change plans to that building, so it like include like an overhead hanging on it? And so, did you let her know that this...
She, that's sort of saying last year as well.
Oh, it was? I don't remember.
Yeah. So since she was out here last year and looked at the building and looked at the site and everything, she...
Did that put us higher up on the list, that she doesn't have to come out for this?
No.
And then when we're, when are we, when's the decision on that?
Well, the decision probably won't be until December, January, but the next time I will hear from the DNR is when the points come out in September.
September.
Yep, so you won't have another update until then on that.
And the only thing I noticed not on here was just to verify that we have received that additional $56,000 from the grant that he sent the email out for, but didn't actually add it to here. I think that would be nice to record and have noted.
Was that the road commission, the tri-pod?
Yes, the tri-pod funds.
Okay.
Just so it's, you know, on record. Like I said, he sent it out an email, but in blood. Anything else on the village manager's report?
No, I just wanted to remind, they're going with nine on the, from rural engineering, visually in contact, do you have my number?
Yes. And I can actually give you the gentleman's card next time I see you, because I have an extra one at the office.
Okay, all right, perfect.
All right.
On there also, the DTE overhead lines, nothing new to report, so, I mean, are we pursuing, you know, the avenues of, you know, looking at what we proposed with the master plan and everything else?
I don't think it got started on that.
No.
I think since it made the master plan, at least it's on paper.
Well, because DTE is talking about making changes right now, and, and we don't want to miss an opportunity if there's something that we might be able to work on.
We do not have any active manager at this moment, it's going to be difficult. But it should be whoever we do hire should be ready to run this thing and get going on that, because you're right, there is, there are time limits up this. That would help Bill here at the moment.
So, did I hear that the personnel committee did an exit interview with Bill before he left? And did you request, and I believe we did request in our previous meeting, that Bill provide you a list of all the active projects that he had going? Did he provide that to you in that, that exit interview?
Besides this and current updates, that's what it is. There's nothing specifically that's left hanging.
So he didn't provide us what we asked him for?
What's completed is completed, what's left hanging is right here. That's what he has.
This is the only project he's working on, everything else is done.
That's left hanging, yes. Unless there's anything he forgot of, this is what's left. He wrapped up some awesome projects, it kept going and going, and completed a lot of things, so that's where he was at when Mark specifically asked for resources and references, and so those were addressed in there, but not projects. Besides, like I said, what he said would be included in the manager's report was what's left.
So I want to make sure, the last project that he's got, I just...
Well, the skate park was, wasn't...
Yeah, the skate park was on there, so I was surprised, because I think that was...
Others, others I think might be missing from this report, is what I'm thinking.
Right, that's why at the last meeting I get asked for, for that, so I thought the personnel, village president would...
As we did, so skate park is the one we forgot, we'll add that on there, and everything else is as is.
The Yonetta Grand or the ballpark, we need to put that, keep that on there.
That would be on, yeah, on the way, the tri-pod funds. Anything further on that?
And then there was also some sidewalk bidding that was supposed to go on. We had received the, you know, basically a legal document, inch, inch thick, excuse me, of, of what we're requiring from a sidewalk. And then after me talking with Bill, we said, oh, we can make this a whole lot simpler for the contractors to quote, and he was to go and get solicitations for bids with a much simpler version of the, the requirements for the sidewalk. Did he present any of that?
For the local contractors, yeah. Nope, I mean, that hasn't even started.
So that...
So that is my thing that he started. So any other questions on the village manager's report?
I had something that just escaped me. You'll come back to me.
I will comment on the overhead lines, that, that was one thing that planning commission ruled was really in favor of, that goes, do they add into the master plan? They thought that was really good, you know, instead of the old guidelines.
Good. I guess my question was, really, I'm surprised he didn't catch that, like, when it started. You know, I just felt that that's kind of left off, or not even thought about.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, because I don't think that any of the public comment that we got, or any of the input we received at the opening events and things like that, I don't think, I don't recall that that was brought up until it was brought up on the original council.
Well, I brought it up on all of that, and it was just interesting that it never appeared on any documentation, or, I don't know, one person probably said something about a gazebo, or, I get that. Yeah, I wrote down myself in two different events.
Yeah, I don't know how they do that, but I'm really glad that...
They went over their head.
Overhead line, what? Where do you see the master plan?
The computer replacements.
No, planning commission said that was a good test, to make sure that that was good.
That's good.
Let's go when we all agree.
Tanya, on number three, on the village manager, and then Doug, this risk management progress, is that over yet, or is that still ongoing?
No, that is not gone, or done complete draft. The suggestions were given, and then, you know, they include these things based on our audit, and then, now they need to be developed.
All right.
But set aside due to resumes are more important for our next review, but yes, definitely. But he did give all the input on, on what was in, and like I said, the audit was included in there.
Got you.
All right. Next item we have is public comments, and those will be on anything that is non-agenda items. Do we have anybody who has public comments for us?
I just have one thing. I was going to do, there is, well, just, I was going to hand this to you. There is a Michigan state law parking on sidewalks.
She actually emailed me already.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else on non-agenda items? All right. Here we go, let's move on to any additional items for the trustees. Now, let's start with Mark, or come down this way.
I think I'm good right now. We've got a good meeting, so I'm good. I like that. I would like to, although they've already left, but I would like to comment on the DDA, I think that they have very successfully done that, just past weekend on the spring flower show in the Old North area. There was a reasonable number of people who attended, even though it didn't start out as the best of plays, but, you know, I think that one thing that, I passed on suggestions, I wish that it could have been maybe more promoted, because I was working there as a certain member, and I kept having people ask me at the very, why is this closed down? What's going on? And so it seemed like, I, I think we probably could have had a little more people attend that if we could have come up with some other ways of promoting.
I did, but I think it was a really good sample.
And I also would like to mention, speaking of DDA and Main Street also, there was the main event that Oakland County held, and I am very pleased to say that at the main event, Oakland County Main Street, Village of Ortonville was recognized for the event of witch's night out. It was really nice getting recognition for that really good new event that we had going on in our community.
Absolutely. I'll piggyback off of that, because I want to just say thank you to the food trucks. And there's the volunteers, the local businesses, and the residents for that, because that was a very nice day on Saturday. The other thing is, I know the question was asked from us, the DDA budget will be wrapped up and ready for June 10th to be approved, but that's not as well.
That was going to bring in?
That's...
And why? Because Bob put a nice branding over you.
Right, and that's addressed to...
So the report, DDA, the DDA report will come out 18 actual versus 19...
They have three years of actual and then a proposed, and that's what was currently being worked on, sorry, at the meeting.
All right.
But yes, their intent is to be ready by June 10th.
All right, so that was one item. The second item I see from, also from Bob, it's requesting, seeking Michigan lottery license of a 50/50 lottery. When are we approving that?
That was in the accepted, yeah.
We did accept these?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's checked.
That was this one, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Check, that's okay, that, while it, I didn't really, didn't...
Very first one, I think.
Uh, it says 50/50, I don't know, recognition, resolution.
It doesn't. All right, and then the next thing is our, and I already brought this up to President Bryce, the, the resident on South Street is parking industrial asphalt hot boxes and industrial asphalt roller compactors in the driveway. And I remember, we all sat down and the court approved him to use, okay, we approved him to, to go off, off, I would say permit, and build a little bit larger shed to use, to be used for maintaining his equipment that's broke, but not to store it in or on the property. So the whole idea, remember, was we, the issues were, he was pulling in large trucks, hot boxes that, you know, smelled like asphalt, in and out of that residential spot. So we said, okay, let's approve a shed, so that in the event his equipment broke, he can take it in there, he can work on it, and then take it back off-site to the other location that he said he had to store his industrial equipment. There, there's two pieces of equipment in violation of the court order right now.
And they are, they are not being kept inside that shed or garage, and they are left outside.
And it's not, it wouldn't even be legal to keep them in there, but they, they're left outside in plain view. And I have photos, I shared them with trustee Bryce, or President Bryce, but I think we need to call them out on it. I don't think it's Liz's job to do that. I think maybe, maybe we can talk with Bob Hoxwell, say, hey, Bob's got to go over there. I think if he's, we can utilize Bob's expertise in these areas to go over there, knock on the door. If he does not feel comfortable to do that, then we can have the sheriff do that for us. But I, I do believe he's in violation of the court order.
Well, we'll go ahead and review that and talk with the lawyer and see what the next step would be on that. We have an offset there as to what, what the order would be.
Okay. That's all I have.
I think I have some ready equipment to talk about.
I have nothing else.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. What I'm looking for, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Can, can I just say one thing? Was, were you going to discuss the final?
That did not get in there. Good catch, Mark. I'm teasing. What we did not discuss on here at all...
Is it on the agenda?
No.
That we can?
We can with the updates of the personnel committee, was the, Bill's six days paid vacation, he was approved to receive that he had earned, that was taken care of. Bill's completing May 17th instead of a full month, still receiving the $20 phone stipend. Obviously, we will be calling him more than once, and, you know, you got the $10 there. The other thing was his mileage stipend for the $100 for May. And then the wellness stipend. With the wellness stipend, the discussion was, it is a three-month term, he's a month and a half in. So we discussed the half payment for the half of the term.
But I, you know, he, he quit, all right? I get it, we owe him the vacation. It's, vacation is, we owe him that. But any bonus or additional stipend, I think needs to go to the existing employees who continue to work here for us hired, and I think that money needs to be divided up amongst Bob and the, in company, but not to pay Bill, because he voluntarily quit.
He quit at the half point of his three months, which we were saying paid him half, paid for him.
What is the policy state? Did personnel review the policy?
Yes, and it does not state at any portion of paying a partial portion. So that means we would pay him the whole portion.
I think that was amended. I think...
It was.
Personnel needs to go back and look at the amendment that was made, that, I think...
Well, the personnel manual shows a whole portion, but we were paying a partial instead of obviously paying him for the whole.
Since he would work half the month, we felt we'd pay half the stipend, because that's the period of time in which he worked and...
There's an amendment that clearly is not in the personnel manual. And, and I believe it says it has, and I believe it says it has to be an active employee. So I think we just need to clarify that.
An active employee for what?
The wellness stipend is what we're talking about, right?
And that's what we're saying. He would not receive beyond his date of finishing. He would get half instead of the full time.
Right, but I believe the...
So if he's worked, we have to pay him for what he's worked, I mean, that's fair.
The question, and I do believe that the wellness stipend is paid at the beginning of that time clock, not at the end. So you're right, if that wellness stipend was paid at the end of him first working that first year, and it's at the end, then we may owe him, but, but I believe that the clock started at the beginning of the cycle, and then therefore we would owe him nothing, because he was already paid for the previous stipend.
All right, so that's something we can look at. Are we okay with his, it's paid at the end, yes? Not at the end?
I don't think so.
But if, so the phone and the mileage is fine, the wellness stipend is the concern, that's something we can look at.
And I truly believe the current employees, I mean, we're going to, we got to bug it in there.
I think we have a policy, and I think it just needs to be referenced if, if anything else, just...
Yep.
If you don't have it, I can provide it to you, or you can go back to the meetings a couple of years ago when it was amended and council-proofed.
All right, so we will table the wellness and set that aside to verify the information on that, and everything else we're all set with. All right, thank you for bringing that up, Mark. And motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Close at 9:25?
I need conflict of interest papers from Kelly and Dan, please.
Can I ask where the act came from in that, that conflict of interest paper? Because I don't remember it being in the MML, Michigan municipal, village law handbook. I don't remember it being in there.
It is on there.
It's, well, it's the Michigan state law, no, the Michigan state law is referenced, MML references the state law. Is that actually in Mary's saying references?
I do believe that the village...